Okay, we'll call the regular session of the Richmond Exempt Village School District back in session at six o'clock PM Eastern Time. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So it is recommended that Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Awesome.
Mr. Burton. Mr. DeFaul with the second. Roll call.
Hello, Mr. DeFaul?
Yes.
And Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mr. Zer.
Yes. Alright, next up Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Since our last board meeting, we lost a member of our staff, Mr. Jason Lynch. And I just wanted to take a minute tonight to honor and remember him. Jason was a really special member of our school community. He was more than an assistant principal, he was a mentor, a leader, a friend, and a source of support for both our students and our staff. Jason was deeply committed to the success and well-being of our students. He believed in them, he challenged them, and he celebrated their victories. His loss is deeply felt, especially at our middle school, and his absence leaves a void in our school family. But Jason's influence lives on in the lessons that he taught, the lives he touched, and the example he set for all of us. Jason will be missed but never forgotten. I also wanted to take a minute and thank our staff, our community, and especially our parents, for your support and your patience as we've navigated the active winter weather that we've experienced. Canceling school or delaying is a huge decision, and I consider a lot of factors before we do anything like that. I know it's an important call for families who are also trying to navigate their own decisions the mornings that we have that kind of weather. So I just wanted to sort of summarize, we consider the safety of our students, the weather that's coming, the prediction of the weather the rest of the day, the road conditions, work with transportation, to see if we can do things safely. Because the goal is for students to be at school if it's a drought, if it's at all possible, but we want to consider all of those things. And then I'm in communication with all of the Claremont County Superintendents before I make any of those calls. So it's a big decision, and it's, there's a lot of discussion and communication that goes on first, but the safety of the students is the, is the most important thing. I also want to mention, because winter weather is not enough, we also have to worry about flooding. So that's another area of concern in the spring in Richmond. So in communication with the County Emergency Task Force, they watch this and work with us to address plans if the Ohio River stage would get to fifty-eight feet or above. So we were concerned about it over the weekend, it looks like we're going to be okay. But with a combination of the snow melt and all of the rain that we had, it was, it was a little dicey until after the weekend, when we knew how it would be. If we do have some localized flooding in some areas, then our transportation team is ready to reroute those if necessary. So we'll be, we'll be okay for now. That's it.
Next up is recognition and awards.
Thank you, we have, excited to welcome Dr. Pince and our leading lines from Monroe.
Good evening. I'm really excited, I have two groups that I would like to recognize, and we'll do a little break between them, because I have a video I want to share. So in January, Monroe once again participated in the Great Kindness Challenge, and that is something that is sponsored by Kids for Peace. This year, along with, I think it was twenty-three million other schools worldwide, we participated in the Great Kindness Challenge. And this year, our theme for the Great Kindness Challenge was that kindness is our superpower. And so as part of that, what we decided to do was to recognize real-life superheroes in our community. The staff and the students went out of our way, we honored Deputy Vetter, who is our School Resource Officer, and we even made special deliveries to the Monroe Township Fire Department to help brighten their days and thank them for all that they do. Our kids were presented with challenges throughout the week, and I was excited to see how they embraced those challenges. And so Kindness Week was a wonderful event. And in partnership with some local businesses that Monroe works with, we also spread our kindness messages throughout the community by partnering with Gold Star, Papa John's, Snappy Tomato, Elvareal, The Green Kayak, Front Street Cafe, and Buck's Riverside Grill. So we have those partnerships working with us as well on that initiative, along with some other things at Monroe. But none of that would have been possible without the folks who helped me plan and prepare for our Kindness Week. So with that, I'd like to recognize Desiree Burdine, Emily Gibson, and Natalie Goodman, who cannot be with us tonight. So this is the crew that helped plan Kindness Week. And so I just wanted to show some highlights of our week from Kindness Week and share that with everyone. So in that video, you could see we had our school partners, our buddies, our building buddies, our older students were working with younger students on different tasks throughout the week. So it was nice that they were showing people models. So that said, it's not enough just to be kind for one week out of the year. And so I wanted to take a moment to recognize three young ladies who go above and beyond to be kind every day at Monroe. Whether it's going out of their way to help a teacher, to collaborate with their classmates, or even to welcome a new student at their lunch table. I can always count on these three to show kindness and to do, do what's right when people aren't looking. So I know that they are going to go on and do great things. So I would also like to recognize Raylin Wood, Emma Fry, and Malaya Marcello this evening. Now, if everybody would join me for a picture.
Congratulations, congratulations, this is really great.
Ready, three, two, one, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you can leave if you, if you want to.
You're welcome to stay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Nice job, thank, nice job. Alright, next up is public participation, and we have a member of the community, Rob Corbett, to present to us. So Mr. Corbett, you have three minutes.
I'm here to speak about the board and former superintendents' actions involving the SCAVO and the issues our district has in a larger scope towards LGBTQ community. Given the chance to reject hostility to a marginalized group, it seems that it was leaned into recently. I know it was a few years ago with the rainbow pin and the flag removals, the issues that were there. This kind of goes along with that. The previous superintendent, and I would assume by extension the board, stated that parental input is, and the values of the community are taken in the programming of the districts. I was here recently for the focus groups for the district, the new search for the superintendent, which I really do appreciate. And that was, I'm glad that we were able to give our input and have, have our say there. But everyone in that group spoke out in support of the LGBTQ students and community, and, and how important it was that we handled those issues with, with grace. I just, I'm not, I haven't seen it, I'm not seeing it now with what's went on with the SCAVO that went on a few years ago. What went on a few years ago was before my son was in the district, he is in the district now. It seems like the, the board and the previous superintendent, see, I don't know who was more in charge, I don't know the hierarchy, I don't know who's in in charge of setting the rules, if it is the board, the superintendent, or both, but it seems like something is reached for and implemented, and you implement a solution in search of a problem, to me. I, I hope that my child can be taught by someone as empathetic and understanding as his SCAVO or any of the other teachers he's had thus far. You know, they're all, they're all wonderful role models. And it just, it feels like the board may be more so the previous superintendent, which I'm not here, he's not here to, to give, this is what I still feel is important. It just feels like, you know, it's, it's let down on students and teachers by giving anything to fear monitoring and I mean, they can say bigotry when it didn't have to be, when it, it didn't have to be that way. I hope that the district, some new superintendent, the board continues to, to do a good job also. Remember the more marginalized members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That was, that was it for public participation, and we'll now move to committee reports. And the first one is Grant Currier Center.
We don't have a report, we have a meeting until this Thursday, so no report.
It's a good, easy one there, huh? Athletic Council.
Yes, the Athletic Council met on January twenty-ninth. We spent some time during that committee meeting talking about the recent Hall of Fame banquet, and the twenty-twenty-five inductees. Mr. Foot shared, it's, it's the highlight of the year for the athletic director, understandably, and evidently was received incredibly well by the public, with a mix of athletes and coaches, but the evening was very well received. We also spent some time talking about the fall sports end-of-season survey. And I'll remind the community that the expectation in the fall was that a survey would be distributed to parents and students. We learned in this committee meeting that the student survey was not sent out, but still is intended to be sent out. And we really saw very few responses from the community, so wanted to encourage people to take an opportunity to do that at the end of the season. Of two-hundred-and-six parents it was sent to, only thirty-eight responded. And so that along with the student feedback, we'd love to, to have to consider as we make decisions around coaches as we go forward. Beyond that, we did have some new business, talking about weight room facilities. Some good news, our students and student athletes are very interested in a class that occurs during the school day, and are looking to get healthy, and so that's produced a space issue, which is a lovely problem to have. So there is a smaller committee getting together to talk about possible solutions to that, and also considering, as Dr. Jill mentioned, you know, having to go down to the fieldhouse in the middle of the day, and inclement weather is not so kind as well, so we'll be exploring that further as we go forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. Safety Committee.
Yes, we held our last Safety Committee meeting on January tenth. We had our administrators and many of our first responders in attendance. In addition to reviewing our drills and procedures for each building, which we do every meeting, we also conducted a tabletop exercise and worked together in three groups, one for each campus, to respond to a crisis scenario. The exercise was really valuable, allowed us to think through things and to refine our procedures and come up with things we still need to think through. We agreed that this would be a valuable exercise to do again with a variety of scenarios. And the first responders that were there offered ideas for things that we should think through. It was a good meeting.
Okay, that's the committee reports, next on the agenda is the first readings.
Okay, so first reading of policies. We reviewed each of the policies in our work session, and they are included in the agenda for your review. Most of those, many of those are language changes by law. We have two that I'd like to call your attention to. The first one is Policy five-one-three-six. This policy supports students fully engaging during instructional time with their teacher, each other, the activities. And so it has our elementary and secondary students, if you can scroll down, thanks Garth. They're not to use cell phones, except in specific cases in the elementary buildings, that's during after-school activities or on their school buses. And then in secondary, they're allowed to use their cell phones during lunch breaks, between classes, during after-school activities, and on the buses. And then the second one is Policy five-two-zero-zero, that's an attendance policy, but if you scroll down to letter G, is new law that allows for up to three religious expression days per year for students. With the approval of the principal, students may be absent without any academic penalty for those religious expression days. So those are the first, this is, the rest of those are policies for first reading. And then the next item is first reading of two calendars. So first of all, the twenty-four, twenty-five, that's this current school year, like to have for first reading, the option, or the, an early dismissal day on May twenty-second for our kindergarten through eleventh graders, our twelfth graders will already be out of school. This allows our elementary students and middle school students to, to leave school two hours early that day. That's a day for a lot of field days, activities for the last day of school, so we'd like to amend the calendar for this school year for that. And then for the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, I won't go over in detail, it's very similar to this year's school calendar, but it's in draft form for first reading for this month, for the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
This is first reading, right?
First reading.
Yeah. We have a discussion just about the cellphone policy, because I saw there's been some squabbles at West Claremont. Here recently, I guess they must have just cracked down just recently, and I guess there's a lot of social media madness going on. So I just want to make sure that people are, are understanding that this is something that came through from the governor, that has put this in place, right?
Correct.
So just to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
Our students have been doing very well with these policies too.
Which is more for the parents concerned, I think, just to know that our hands are pretty much tied, even if we were to try to allow it, it's not, it's something that the governor's put in place.
Alright, so lots of reading to do.
Like we haven't already run it all, right, once or twice.
Next item is human resource items.
Okay, letter A, we have four resignations. Letter B is a recommendation to approve Phil Heflin as our interim administrator at the middle school for the remainder of this school year. Item C is the employment of a classified employee. Letter D, our four substitute classified employees. Letter E is recommendation to approve Gabby Kellum as the spring assistant athletic director. Item F is the supplemental contracts. We reviewed these at the work session, the new, new recommendations are in red, and there's been no one added since the work session. Item G are two additional stipends for mentors, both at the middle school, for two new teachers. Item H are two additional employees who've completed their science of reading requirements, reimbursement from the state. And then item I is an extent, is an unpaid leave request for an employee who has been, who has been on leave. Those are the ones for human resources.
Alright, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve items nine A through nine I.
So moved.
Second.
Got that. Okay, any discussion on any of the items? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Zer.
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. DeFaul?
Yes.
Okay, special education resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Fry presented this at the work session last week. Due to the changes in the Ohio operating standards for the education of children with disabilities, the timing of that language change requires districts to approve the special education model policies and procedures in a resolution by March. Those are, the resolution as well as the model policy procedures and the operating standards are attached.
Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the special education resolution as presented. So, okay, Mr. Tim got it.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Wooden. Make me work up here. Alright, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. DeFaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mr. Zer?
Yes.
Treasurer's report and action items.
Thank you, Mr. Zer. Item A is organizational meeting minutes, B is our meeting minutes from January last month, and C is the Athletic Council meeting minutes. On our financial reports, we do have the board report to look at for the year. I just tried to break this down a little bit more detail, every quarter, every month, there's not a whole lot of changes. I will tell you that we did get our second half lottery payment. We get about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year from the state for lottery total, they're broken up into about two sixty-five thousand dollar payments. So that's really the only big piece of report, month-to-month, on the, on the financials. Item E is our donations, we're always appreciative of our donations that come in. Item F is one confirming purchase order, this is actually my department for the auditors. So the auditors come in a little late sometimes, so we just wait for them to get here, and then we write up the invoice when they start billing, so that's what this is for. They're doing the audit as we speak, they're almost finished. Item G is acceptance of tax rates, this is from the Claremont County Auditor's Office, every Board of Education does this once a year. It's essentially just confirming that these are the levies we have on and have in place, that this is what they will collect for us in mileage for property tax levies. It's pretty standard procedure, but I just want to see this approved by the board. Item H is our financial reduction plan, the Richmond Exempt Village School District was placed in precautionary status, financial precautionary status, and we had a reduction plan in place. We had to get that approved by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. That consists of a spreadsheet workbook and a narrative that is open here on your screen, kind of outline how we got here. Essentially with both power plants closing, now Zemmer closing early, now we've lost that revenue, and we're, we're kept suspending now. Thankfully we have a little bit of cash balance, but we have to show that what we're going to do to reduce enough expenditures to cover our year-three cash balance for the, so that's what this plan does, and this needs board approval as well, so I have an agenda for your approval. Item I is real estate resolution, so this is, a new law was passed a year or two ago that we want to challenge any kind of large depreciation of real estate values within the district's boundaries, we have to do a resolution now to do that. So we have a tax attorney we work with on this. He recommends when we, when you challenge these things, and he gives us resolutions, it's just becoming, this should become a pretty standard thing, and we can move it forward. And that is all I have for treasurer's report.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve items eleven A through item eleven I. Somebody?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Tim Cott, if you could reexamine the Athletic Council meeting minutes, I was reading from my notes, but it notes my title incorrectly.
Okay.
Todd is now the Vice President of the Board.
Thank you, we can fix that, thank you very much.
Good catch.
Yes, thank you.
And the real estate resolutions are a new requirement from the State of Ohio, right?
It is, just to make sure, if the images jump there, that holds down before you challenge these valuations.
And then the financial reduction plan is based upon the level of where we're at with precautionary status. What's the other levels, precautionary?
I don't know off the top of my head, but yeah, it's
He tries to avoid those.
Yeah, we're, we're first layer, so yeah.
Okay, we're
We're more serious from here.
I recall this last time, that's why it's interesting, I don't remember going on this last time.
Yeah, we were placing this, yeah, so it was back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, yeah.
And the narrative and the workbook is all there for, for everybody to see. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Alright, Mr. DeFaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mr. Zer?
Yes.
Okay, levy options and requirements.
I'd like to introduce Paul Rutter, for great, he is our financial levy specialist attorney. He's going to give a nice presentation, I'll introduce him from here, thank you for coming out, Mr. Rutter, thank you, nice to meet you in person.
Yes, thank you, board members, for having me down today, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I'm going, we're trying to keep within the time constraints discussed, so I actually have more content in the presentation than I can really cover in detail with all you, but you have as a resource, and of course, your treasurer can also walk you through any questions you may have. And I just want to give a disclaimer that, obviously, I didn't want to talk about the laws as it stands right now. There was Protection Twenty-three, Collection Year Twenty-four, almost half the school districts in the state last year were either in a sex annual reappraisal or a triennial update. And I don't have to tell you about the large increase in property values we've seen, especially home values over the past few years. So that was hitting taxpayers hard, especially with so many districts at the twenty mil floor. So that meant a lot of tax increases, and consequently, a lot of heat on the General Assembly. There was the Joint Committee on Property Tax Review and Reform that, that met all through last year, released an eight-hundred-sixty-five-page report at the end of the year. Had a number of proposed reforms that they, they mentioned, some of which are in conflict, but two things I'll mention, you know, one thing that is under consideration is lowering the twenty mil floor, which will obviously be a huge hit to a lot of districts. And another one, Senate Bill Sixty-Six, which was recently introduced, would have all inside mileage, emergency levies, substitute levies, and even income taxes all count towards an effective mileage floor, which is currently the twenty mil floor. So again, that would just be a devastating move. So again, that would just be a devastating move for a lot of districts because two chicks for years have been doing levy planning around how the twenty mil floor works, so which I'll be talking about tonight, so um just, just keep that in mind, um there's potential changes coming, so with that, I'm just gonna skip to the twenty mil floor uh discussion a little bit because that's definitely something that is impacting you guys. And um all your levies right now count against the twenty mil floor. And so as you remember, you had a nine point four mil levy that was approved back in March of twenty twenty. And I'm sure your taxpayers remember that, it's, you know, it's a big ask, right, for any community to pass, really, that, that many mils, your community did it. You know, fortunately, once that happens, once you come off the floor, as, as you did, um reductions factors start, not only on that new levy, but all of your levies that are subject to reduction factors, so that's all your voted levies excluding your inside millage, your share of inside millage you get. So this little chart, uh I found this useful when I'm giving presentations, hopefully you do too, but it shows um what two types of levies count against the floor, which is your inside millage that's dedicated for your general fund as well as your outside or voted levies that are going for general expenses. Um and so that's, that's everything you have right now, falls within those two buckets. So everything you have is counting against the floor. And uh and also everything about your inside millage is also subject to reduction factors. So, you know, once you're at the floor, which you were prior to that nine point four mil levy in twenty twenty, and you're getting full inflationary growth. But once you come off the floor with a fixed rate mill, uh fixed rate levy, which is what you passed in twenty twenty, then reduction factors start, not just on the new levy, but all of your old voted levies as well. So what that happens is that um, that starts dragging you back towards the floor pretty quickly. And I was thinking about how do I show that visually, this is what I came up with, hopefully um you're able to, to see what I was intending here. But i- of course, this is very simplistic, right, you know, uh inflationary growth at the twenty mil floor is never just a straight line up, but it's probably more like a stock market line where it can be going up or down, but I'm just showing you over time, the trend line is going to be up. And that, the, the red line is what you had in year one, you had a revenue bump taking you off the floor, but as in, as property values increase, you're getting dragged uh backwards the floor, and if you, if that doesn't work on the screen, but you're kind of in that, in that point where those two lines are getting uh closer together. And I would expect, you know, it's hard to predict how property values are gonna behave in the next five, ten or so years, but you, you can see where you're headed, you're headed back to the floor again. It's probably gonna be hard for your taxpayers to understand that while they approved a nine point four mil levy a few years ago, that's no longer giving you any additional revenue on top of where you would have been without that levy, just being at the floor. Um to compare that with an emergency levy, which is not currently factored in the twenty mil four calculations, emergency levy is a fixed sum levy. You know, it's, it's a dollar amount you go on the ballot for, uh it's, it's, so it's not a millage based levy, it's, it's, you know, whatever that amount of the emergency levy is, a million dollars, two million dollars. Because it's not factored in the twenty mil floor, it's just an, it's kind of taking you up to another revenue line. It's this extra revenue on top of where you're at at the twenty mil floor. And there's a number of other districts, a few other districts in, in the county that are taking advantage of that, so. I just, I want to make sure, while I, you know, I have that red line going up, it's not because it's increasing the value, it's just staying perpendicular to your, your uh twenty mil floor growth. So it's just an extra revenue boost on top of where you'd be at the floor. So this is just showing your, your current tax rates, nineteen seventy-six line, it's just how uh Department of Taxation shows all levies nineteen seventy-six and prior, so it's not that you had a twenty point six mil levy in nineteen seventy-six, it's just that uh aggregates them there. Um and then you had a levy in, in nineteen seventy-seven and then nothing until twenty twenty. Uh but I just want you to zero in on, for class one, you're at roughly twenty-two and a half mils, only about two and a half mils over the floor, effective mils right now. Uh even though you passed a nine point four mil levy just uh five years ago. And so, and, and the reason for that is uh, is you were heading into a six annual reappraisal when you placed that on the ballot. And so you, reduction factors hit year one, so right out of the gate, you lost, from an effective millage standpoint, you know, I think it's about eighteen point, uh a little over eighteen percent right there. And then, you know, it was kind of static until you hit the uh triennial update. And then, you know, effective millage wise, that knocked you down about three quarter, three quarters of the way from the boost you got. So just, you know, it shows the um, the downside to having a fixed rate levy when you're already at the floor. Uh another way to, um if we were just looking at, if you look at that kind of middle footnote there, uh I won't read that whole thing, but it, if you were looking at what your estimated revenue would you be placing that um, that levy on the ballot in twenty twenty, what you would have expected to collect, collect from class one. And I'm only talking about class one here because class two is a totally different story, reduction factors apply differently to class one and class two. And with the Zimmer power plant, uh you actually have no reduction factors on, on class two, which I can speak to a little bit. But um your, your estimated revenue benefit above the floor right now for class one is just a little over a million dollars, so only a little over a third of, you know, what you would have expected the revenue benefit to be when you placed that on the ballot. It just, it just shows that the floor heats away. If you got a question, just shout them out.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I forgot to mention that, that early on, so.
I'm not on the board.
Yeah. So just, you know, bottom line, uh the way things work right now, districts at the floor prefer to stay at the floor to get full inflationary growth on your twenty mils. And your options to get additional revenue that don't take you off the floor are emergency levies, including substitute levies, which are a, a, they substitute for emergency levies, which I'll, I'll get to, or income tax levies, none of which currently count towards the floor. Can you advance that, Greg?
No problem.
Thanks. Okay, uh so just real quick, here is your total assessed valuation for collection year twenty-five, which is tax year twenty-four, which property taxes are, as you know, likely a year and a years. Couple of things I wanted to mention, you know, it's helpful to know, um you know, what is our tax base primarily, and especially now with the Zimmer plant closed. You know, you're about eighty-five percent is class one residential and agricultural. And your, your PUP is down to, you know, I'll put only quotation marks, ten percent. I mean, for a number of districts, they would love to have that, but I'm sure that doesn't feel great for you guys when PUP used to be such a significant uh part of your tax base. Which I, above that box, it just kind of showed from collection year seventeen to collection year twenty-five, over that deep year period, you took a sixty-one percent hit in your, in your PUP values. Assuming that's primarily because of the Zimmer plant. And also if, if you rea-, I'm not, again, I'm not gonna read that whole box, but it just kind of unpacked what you guys saw in the triennial update that uh was first for collection last year. You know, a lot of counties across the state, if we're going through a reappraisal update, we're seeing a property that home, class one values, I should say, going up, especially home values, going up thirty to forty percent range. And actually, you were close to that, for class, class one, you were up twenty-eight percent. But overall, you were only up a little over nine percent because you, you really got whacked in your PUP and commercial values. I'm assuming the commercial was probably tied also to the Zimmer plant, but, so that, that really chewed up a lot of the increase you would have, you would have had otherwise. So again, this, this, this table just uh shows your tax rates, we saw this earlier, you know, um and I confirmed this with the county, it's really unusual to see, I mean, you have a lot of old levies there, no reduction factors at all on your class two, full voted rate there. I don't know if I've ever seen that before, it's because, and I, I was asking the Deputy Auditor, kind of Auditor's office about that, and they just said that with the closing of the Zimmer plant, your class, they had to adjust up the uh, the rates on class two to make up for that, or try to, I'm sure it didn't. But that's why there's no reduction factors applied to class two right now, so that's uh something worth while to know. Um just for a comparison, this just shows where you guys fall, uh this is ranked by class one effective rates. So you guys are actually the second lowest in the county. And ironically, you're not at the floor, even though you're, you're second lowest. A lot of districts that are, have higher effective rates than you are at the floors, you can read through some of those notes. Some of them have emergency levies uh or income taxes that are getting some additional revenue from. So your, your class two is actually on the higher, higher side, because again, because of the Zimmer plant, but uh for class one, you're pretty well. We're just gonna skip straight to uh what I call fixed sum levies, again, that's emergency levies, um where you place a dollar amount on the ballot. You get to choose, it's uh, you get to choose two purposes, either emergency requirements or avoiding an operating deficit. Either way, it's current expenses, operating money that's going into your general fund. Uh one to ten years is the maximum amount you can put it on, so you can't do that type of levy continuing unless you substitute for it, which I'll get to. And there's no revenue growth unless you were to do a renewal with an increase, which is whatever that dollar amount is, that's what it collects at uh just indefinitely, as long as you keep renewing it. But the big benefit, it's, it's not included in the twenty mil four, so that's why a number of other um school districts in the county have one. So as you can see, since your um total assessed valuation is um, you know, just over five hundred million, um not surprising that for every five hundred thousand dollars of, of value, you're looking about a mil of property taxes, a little bit less. So that kind of, you know, easy way to think about it, I, I kind of mapped that out on the chart for you, so you can see it at different dollar amounts with the millage. That cost per hundred thousand is now how it shows up on the ballot. There was something called Houseville one forty, started taking it back in twenty twenty-three. When you were on the ballot back in twenty twenty, the cost that showed up a cent per hundred dollars of taxable value. So that nine point four mil levy showed ninety-four cents. Now you can see, look at the bottom line, you know, five million dollars at nine point four five, it showed just three hundred thirty-one dollars. It's now per hundred thousand dollars of county auditors appraised values in technical, technical term. What that means is just market value that's set on your, on your property by the county auditor. So if you had a five hundred thousand dollar house, uh that's not the assessed value, but the market value, you would just take that three hundred thirty-one dollars, multiply it by, by five, and that's what your annual cost would, would roughly be. Okay, substitute. So substitute levy, um these are, uh can be a nice alternative in, in some cases. A number of, of districts have started turning towards these, particularly if they're higher growth districts. You cannot play, you cannot start with the substitute levy, you have to have an emergency levy in place first in order to be substitute for it. Uh so that's, that's one wrinkle, but if you have an emergency levy in place, uh you can substitute for it. And um one of the nice benefits is you get uh revenue growth from new construction, which you do not get with a traditional emergency levy. So, you know, I don't know how much new construction you have, but as that comes online, whatever the, the um millage for that substitute levy had that, in that year, would be applied to that new construction coming on the ballot at that time and then going forward. And another really nice thing about a substitute levy is you can make it continuing, one to ten years or continuing, which is something you can't do with a traditional emergency levy. Now, you cannot pair a substitute with an, with an increase, so that, that is one downside, you know, once you, if you were to make it continuing, then you'd be stuck. I'm not gonna try to go into this, but substitutes don't lend themselves very well to constantly renewing them. So if you were targeting a substitute, my recommendation, you know, obviously you have to start with the emergency levy, I would recommend that uh at some point, you, you try to make that continuing and not, especially not on like a five year cycle, because uh you would lose a lot of the growth that way. It would, it would chew it up, which again, it's, that's complicated, probably uh more than we need to talk about right now, but. So of the, the four districts with the highest class one effective millage, um three have emergency and or substitute levies. Uh I think it's uh West Claremont, they have both an emergency and a substitute, so. Milford is the one that does not, and ironically, you can see, you know, their voted millage is almost twice yours, yet effective millage is only twenty-five mils, not much higher than yours. Just an example of how those reduction factors chew your, you know, the value of your levy up over time uh as you get above the floor, so. All right, let's talk about uh income taxes real quick, uh as I wrap up. So school district income taxes can only be levied in quarter percent increments, and there are a number of purposes. Almost always they're done for current expenses, occasionally we'll see them for, for permanent improvements, but usually it's for current expenses. As far as term goes, you have maximum flexibility here, you can choose any number of years or making it continuing. And of course, you know, you will get some revenue growth off of that as wages increase, which is nice, although you do have some downside risk if you're heading into a recession or depression, people are losing their jobs, wages are going down, you're gonna feel that, of course, with your income tax. There are two bases for the income taxes, uh the traditional or all income is like it says, all income. Whereas an earned in, 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 only, only hits, you know, W two income or self-employment income to the extent it's included in modified adjusted gross income, so. Earned income only tends to be, I don't know, you have a lot of retirees in your district, but they tend to like prefer earned income, uh income taxes better. Uh same with farmers, it doesn't seem to hit them as hard as a, a traditional would, obviously. And if you're familiar with the municipal income tax, that's based on where you work. School district income tax is based on where you live. It doesn't matter where your company is at, you know, whether you're commuting in Cincinnati, or if you're working for someone, you know, a company in California, as long as you live in the district, uh you're paying that income tax. So here is um a estimated revenue chart that we got from the Department of Taxation for your district, so they estimated the revenue. And I'm showing that for you, the quarter percent increments up to two percent. Uh the equivalent property tax millage, we got this from them, I was working with uh Matthew on this uh last year before we had your new um assessed valuation, so I updated the equivalent property tax millage for your new AV, but uh you can see, you know, that the, the left side there is the traditional. Uh it does quarter percent increments and the right side is to earned income, so you can see where those land.
Paul, what's the tradit-, what's the typical rate with districts across the state or locally?
Yeah, so, I mean, it, it's all over the place on that. I, I would say, uh you're not normally gonna see a school district income tax over two percent, that's rare. I've seen a few, but it's, that's uncommon. Normally, you know, one to one and a half, I would say is probably the most common range. You know, depends on, uh sometimes there can be some tension, obviously, with municipalities that you overlap with, depending on what your dynamics are, because municipalities tend to do income taxes theirs, but, I mean, the reality is by having an income tax that's sharing some of the load, so it's not all on property taxes. You know, the school district where I live is, uh has almost no commercial, very little PUP, so it's all fallen on class one, it's all residential. And, you know, we had to move to an income tax a few years ago, just to, to try to share that load, because it's getting, it's just getting so high on, on the residential taxpayers, and, you know, there's a limit to how much they want to do. So um Matthew, to your question, there's, there's only two uh districts in the county right now that have a, have an income tax, they're both at one percent, they're both traditional. They're, they're both generating, you know, between four and a half to five million dollars, and so, you know, one percent for you guys, that's, that's a traditional base would actually generate a little more.
A little more now, sorry.
Yeah, you guys.
Okay, thank you.
So uh I know I, I threw a lot at you, move through quickly, you have the, the presentation, uh if you need a little more backup, but, if anyone's got any questions?
Thank you for coming out.
Okay.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll certainly follow up with you.
Sure.
Uh speaking to the board, and we'll, we'll definitely be in touch.
Right, and I think, I, you know, I already gave the treasurer some um election filing deadlines, you know, for the next few years, if you're looking at that. And whether it's a property, I, you probably remember how it was placed in the levy on five years ago, but it is, you know, whether it's an income tax or a property tax, you're gonna, it's gonna take two resolutions by the board with the certification in between those two. The income tax, you're getting that from the Department of Taxation, it's property tax, you're getting it from the county auditor, and then all three of those things have to be filed with the board elections by the relevant filing deadline. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for coming out.
Sure.
Memorandum of Understanding is the next item on the agenda.
Memorandum of Understanding is the next item on the agenda.
This is, uh, just a language fix for the treasurer's office, uh, for our supplemental contracts and how to get paid. So right now, uh, in previous, it's listed as per day for site manager or gate worker work. And I like to see that say per shift, so they can use multiple times during an event and, uh, or authorized to pay, just like a little language thing up there.
Okay, it is, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the supplemental salaries memorandum of understanding within RTO as presented.
So moved.
Okay. I'll start with the second one. Okay? Any discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Charlie, Mr. DeFaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmer?
abstain.
Next is, uh, the, the employee severance plan here to cover that.
This is the, uh, we covered the, the, um, no, we covered this. The employee severance plan is, um, an incentive plan to, uh, encourage retirement for anybody who's retirement eligible. So we're working with EPC to identify any of our staff that may be eligible for retirement. Um, and we make sure we're in precautionary status financially. So we're just kind of looking for ways to reduce expenditures as much as we can, really, to be honest. This is something we hope that, uh, staff who are eligible for this, uh, incentive will take advantage of it and, uh, help kind of the district to reduce the amount of expenditures long-term necessary for five years.
That's the end. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the employee severance plan memorandum of understanding within RTO as presented.
Some other?
Mr. Pootman's motion.
I can second.
Second, Mr. Store. Any discussion?
So just to point out under the earlier, um, document, I'm trying to go back here, that you covered, Matt, um, the document that gave an overview of our financial situation and corrections therein that will be required. This potential opportunity for, um, encouraging retirement may result in a net savings that would avoid us to have to act to the FY 2026 additional reductions in staff.
So what that means is we have to do all this again next year unless we can get enough retirements. Absolutely.
So just to draw attention to that document, the FY 2026, um, there's the FY 2025, which obviously lose, uh, lists actions that would be required in that fiscal year, but also the 2026.
And we are, we are definitely spending around four to $5 million a year beginning this year. So we would, you would be a lot of retirements. Kind of cover that. Anything we can do helps decrease that, helps us come up with a, a plan that's a little more feasible.
Can you also share just a high level example of what that would look like if we had a teacher who came forward and we cleared that buyout in year one, the cost savings over the next three years?
Yeah, just a quick, just some quick math on that. Right now, a teacher, let's say a teacher who's retirement eligible, that's on the highest step of our salary schedule for our teachers, uh, including benefits, they're taking medical and health benefits and so forth, is probably total compensation around a hundred and $30,000 a year for that teacher. Um, so if, if, look over like a three year plan, if we can get that teacher to retire, and let's say for me, the most feasible option, hopefully we'd be, maybe not replace them, try to save that money, uh, we do the $60,000 incentive severance, and we get that gain about $300,000 over three years, that teacher retiring and not being replaced. So the goal is to try to get as many of those as we can in that slot. Even if they are replaced, they're replaced with a younger teacher, it starts off from the lower part of the salary schedule. And a lot of those younger teachers typically, uh, are taking benefits as often as, as our four seasoned teachers, so there's a savings there as well.
Thank you.
Sure. Roll call.
All right, Mr. DeFaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmer abstain. Academic report.
Okay, on a more pleasant note, I want to, um, just, uh, send a little bit of praise for our, our teachers. I want to continue to, um, just shout out how hard they're working on our new curriculum. Um, our ELA teachers are in their third year of our new, um, curriculum in each of our grade bands. Our math teachers are in their second year of implementation. Science teachers are in their first year right now, and we're working in social studies with our social studies teachers, um, all of our social studies teachers, sixth through 12th grade, and committees at our elementary levels, K through five. And we're in the stage now where we're reviewing materials. Um, the beginning of March, we will have some publishers presenting to us some of the, uh, options for new materials. It's been a long time since we have adopted any, or have had any new resources for social studies. So at the end of this school year, we will have put in place research-based, really quality, um, resources and programs for all four of our core subject areas. It's a huge accomplishment. It's a big, um, lift on the part of the teachers, especially teachers in elementary who are teaching more than one subject, many of whom are doing that. So they're learning, um, new programs for multiple subjects and just doing a fantastic job. They are also, um, continuing our math, science, and ELA teachers to meet periodically throughout the school year to make sure that we're, um, teaching those programs with validity as well as making sure that what's happening in third grade in one classroom is happening in third grade in that same subject across the, across the two elementary. So I just want to, um, say a thank you to those teachers, and we'll have more information coming about social studies soon.
Okay. Communications report.
Unfortunately, um, the video that I'm about to play, but you does not have sound this month. I'm going to make the wrong joke. You have to listen to me talk. Um, so what you're seeing now are a lot of pictures from the last month or so. These are from the middle school dance specifically that was held. Um, there were no shortage of smiles. The kids all seemed to have a very good time. A lot of them actually wanted to pose for pictures, either with their friends or for me. So you can see some of the kids in here and everyone else, Mr. Kozlowski, who just had a great time. Um, the literal next night following the dance was our sports Hall of Fame induction ceremony, that you'll see some pictures up here soon, as we mentioned earlier. Um, you know, we'll start with a lot of the current members being honored at halftime of the boys varsity game against Bethel Tate. The ceremony itself began over in the high school cafeteria. It was a, uh, long ceremony, but it was very well received, and it was a great night to honor some outstanding athletes and coaches. A little later on in the video, you'll hear more about the amazing job that our drama club did with Romeo and Juliet at the beginning of the month. Memorizing all those lines, especially with the dialect that was written in and used at the time was no easy task, but the kids were great. I was a little thrown off when they started talking about New York and New Jersey, but after I read my ticket and learned that the title of the play was Romeo and Juliet in New York, it made a lot more sense. Uh, that happened last night, so I finally understood about two and a half weeks later. There were three wonderful shows, and if you're planning ahead, the Spring Musical will be Matilda, and it is the first weekend of May, May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. Um, earlier this month, our high school also had a career fair academic expo type thing. In the morning, students were taken around the building, and they got to meet with people inside of every department and learn things about the new classes that are upcoming for next year, like the construction courses. They met with all of them, and despite walking around and popping in and out of those classrooms, I got to learn a lot about courses that I am not smart about to take. That same afternoon, there was a post-graduation expo fair where students were able to listen to various branches of the military come in and give presentations in the auditorium. The businesses from around the area were set up in the gymnasium, and we also had a whole bunch of mostly local colleges that were up on the second floor in some of the classrooms. Shawnee State was there, UC Miami, uh, Bowling Green came down, Marshall came over. Um, so there were a bunch of colleges just up there, and the kids had a great experience walking around and looking at them. Bowling Green brought an entire stand. Uh, they, they had, um, like giant posters on either side, a table with a tablecloth. They went all out for it. I think you might see a picture of it later on. So I'm going to finish by giving a, a very quick winter sports update. The girls' basketball season has ended. They finished the year with four wins, including one by 12 at Schroder. Madison Steelman had 12 points and 15 rebounds in that game, and Morgan Patrion scored 15 points for Richmond in that game. The boys team finished third in the year, 10 and 12 overall. They won four out of their last five games to finish off the regular season. They are still playing. They have CHCA in the sectional tournament at Monroe Saturday at 1:30. Speaking of tournaments, our bowling team was at one earlier today. The sectional at Crossgate Lanes, the bowling team for the boys finished 16th. I'm going to butcher his name, I'm so sorry. James Dearman, I hope missed a spot at districts by one spot. He lost that one time, Baker. The girls' team bowls back at Crossgate on Thursday. Four of our boys swimmers competed at the district meet last week. Jason Green, Talon Smith, Nick Malison, Carson Corbin finished 19th, made improvements on their time and their placement. Finally, we have wrestling updates. The wrestling teams were both back in action at the SBAC tournament this past weekend. The boys team finished fourth and had seven individual placers. Mason Partini won his weight class. Eli Stark and Lucas Martinez were second. Colton Wodman, Ryan Brack, and Eli Stockton were fourth there at Western Brown this weekend for the sectional. The girls' tournament, the first ever one for the SBAC, was also this past weekend. The Lady Lions were second in the league in the first tournament. A whole bunch of wrestlers placed, so they were a major. Charlie Jones, Julyla Grantham, Josie Menard, Menard, and Carol Foster won their weight classes. Zoe Centers and Willen Ringenbach for their second. Maddie Milner, Justice Roden, and Jordan Marroy were third. Alex Rising was fifth, and Lydia Milner was sixth. The Lady Lions are the 10th seed out of 29 teams in the sectional, and they will also wrestle this weekend at Western Brown. So, yeah, it's sports events. Thank you. I think there's about eight more seconds in there.
Your turn? Thank you. Okay. Next up is adjournment.
So moved.
Okay. Second. All right.
Roll call, Mr. DeFaul?[1791.72]